Teacher voice, how's that sound? Yeah. Maybe it will if I, you know, plug your ears if we get to that point. We'd like to begin this evening with a moment of silence, so please join me. And now, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening Jesse's going to read our mission statement.
The Veridian Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks Jesse. And the first major item on our agenda this evening is the Schwartz and Druber Award. And as I mentioned, for those of you who are watching at home tonight, we have a nice big audience. I'm very excited to have our Pointer family here this evening. And lots of purple shirts, I wore the wrong color, sorry guys. But I am going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman and Dr. McNulty here in a minute, but I just want to say, welcome to all of you. We are delighted to have you. We are super excited to share in this award with you tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn the mic over.
Okay, welcome. And I did wear my purple shirt, and I brought my purple water bottle, just for this occasion. So, we are very excited tonight to officially honor our Schwartz and Druber winners this year. And it is Pointer Elementary, and they are actually here in full force. And so hopefully, we can get the cameras, the TV cameras to them, so they can see how many people are here. But just for our viewers, just a little bit of background on this. And then I'm going to pass it to Dr. McNulty, who's going to talk a little bit about the work that was done to lead to this great honor tonight. So, first of all, background on the award. Dr. Schwartz and Druber was the superintendent here from 1995 to, I think, 2002. And he led the district during really some quite difficult times, especially financial times, and difficult, financial times. And so, upon his departure, they instituted an award that honored the most growth in the district. And so, each year, we have a traveling trophy that goes to the building that had the greatest growth. And although they may or may not be the highest performing, we always say that, in the district, it is the district, the building that had the highest growth from the previous year. And so, this year, we are just thrilled to recognize Pointer Elementary. And we'll just take a moment to give them a little round of applause. And I think we all know firsthand just how much work goes into truly creating student achievement. It's just, it is just an endless job, and it is one so important and so critical. And every day, I know that the staff comes to work knowing that they make a difference, and striving to make a difference in each of the lives of their kids. And so, just amazing work, and we are so proud of you. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McNulty, who is the Associate Superintendent for Educational Services.
You know, I just want to start out by saying, thank you. We are so grateful for the leadership you provided for your students and your community. I had met with Trista last year, and I was looking at some of the data. And I could see the evidence piling up, that you were making movement with your students and your commitment to their outcomes. And you could watch it, and I could watch it. And Trista wasn't sure what I was saying at the time, but I saw it coming. And as we move forward as a district, your leadership, as we move forward collectively, is powerful. Our monthly meetings with your colleagues, and what you've learned over this last month, is going to add not just to your students and to your families, but to all of us. And that's inspiring. We need this kind of inspiration. So, it's just not the award in itself as an endpoint, but it's a beginning. So, I personally just want to thank you for all you've done. I know you're a Google-based school, so thank you there. I've learned so much in the last, by the way, I found out that Chrome is good. Internet Explorer, not hating on Microsoft, isn't as good. But thank you, because you've really built a network of achievement that we're going to launch from.
Tara is here. So, yeah. So, at this point, I'd love to invite all of you in the purple shirts. And also, I want to give my fellow board members a chance to say a few words. So, Lyle or Mike, anybody, anybody want to jump in?
Well, I do. First of all, I love your shirts. They're really cool. And is it teaching and all staff get the shirts, or who? Okay, it's really cool, and it identifies you, and I think it's, I would wear it proudly. But I just wondered if some of you would mind coming to the mic and introducing yourself to us, and just telling us what you love about Pointer? What you, how you worked so hard to reach this goal? And just, what's great about your school and your staff and your kids?
Don't all run-
Don't be shy.
Don't all run up at the same time. And Trista, you need to turn that mic on, so that little green light's on.
Yes. All right, how's that?
Perfect.
Okay, so I've already cried, so that is a good thing. Last year, I think, one of the most awesome things that led us to where we are today are the amazing people sitting behind me. You know, we can have a vision as a leader, but if the people that are, you know, going on that journey with us don't believe in the same things that you do, then you're not going to get anywhere. So, these people are the ones that are responsible for that amazing trophy. And obviously, our kids. We actually have one here tonight who came to join us. So, yes, thank you, Gabby, for being here. But amazing kids, amazing staff, who will do whatever it takes, you know, to let our kids see success. One of the things that we started last year was called BLAST, which stands for Built-In Learning and Support Time, which gave us the time throughout the day for our students to get interventions, for all students, all at the same time throughout the school day. And so, from our music teacher, to our gym teacher, to our school counselor, to our behavior interventionist, all of those people were providing needed interventions for our kids to be successful. And we could have never had the success that we had without their support.
Is there anybody else who wants to say?
Yeah, somebody, I know somebody's just dying to talk.
Hello, I'm Jill Barde, lead teacher at Pointer. And I just wanted to also add to what Trista had said, that she's been a really great leader for us. And that's how it is possible, is working together. Her leadership, our amazing staff, that's what makes it work. She is a, like, her passion for RTI, I think, is what really made a huge difference, is she knows it. So, if you ever have any questions about it, she'd be the person to check with. And making it a priority in our building, and providing the time for the staff members to, you know, be immersed in it, understand it fully, so that they can implement it to its best. So, she provided that time. And it was, like she had said, school counselor, Oliver Specialist, PARAs, everybody was working toward that goal for the kids. And so, I think that also helps with our entire staff, which also includes our support professionals. So, her leadership is also to be recognized for our success.
Well, good. Yay. Good.
Hi, my name is Deb Barsho. I'm the music teacher. And like Jill had said, we were all involved. And I think that's just the awesome feeling, to know that we all had a part. But I think one of the amazing things was how the staff and with the leadership, we were able to involve the children in the vision. Because with our Leader in Me program, one of the awesome parts was setting goals. And to be able to even, for the kindergartners, you know, what's our school goal? To make expected or accelerated growth in reading and math. And everyone in the building knew that. And so, when Trista announced the test scores at the end of the year, if you could hear it, all the kids cheer, you know, that was really heartwarming, to know that they recognized that they, you know, that they made it to the moon, because that was our theme for the year, so.
Hi, my name is Tamara Cowell. I'm a, I was a special at PARA, and then I'm also a general at PARA now. I get the advantage of going into each classroom. I mean, I've been in practically all the classrooms with my kids. And I go see how the teachers and the specialists, how they'll teach them, and then they make sure that they'll stop and take the time to make sure that all the kids get it, you know. So, I just think that we have a great staff here.
Hi, my name's Julie Fenton. I'm the fifth, I'm a fifth grade teacher. I was new to the district last year, so I was very overwhelmed when I came into Pointer, because it was like nothing I've ever seen. It truly is a family. It's the kids, the parents, teachers, administration, all working together. It's an amazing place to be. And I thought I was going to have to leave at the end of last year, but I got to stay after numbers all worked out. So, it's awesome. It is, it's truly awesome. And it's definitely a wonderful family.
Anyone else? Don't be shy. You want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that, can you hear me? Up here, we touch on a lot of topics, organizational structure, everything from facilities, to finance, to utilities, to curriculum, to bills due and payable, the things that are on these agenda. But it's all for one purpose, and that's student achievement. And it happens to be our number one goal, up here, as you'll see. So, this is the heart and soul of why we do everything we do. And the teachers in the classroom, I think, clearly are the most important element of any of that. So, thank you for that, and don't hesitate to, to at least ask for what do you need to sustain this, or even improve this. So, so don't be shy about that, because everybody up here is supporting you. That's our job. And so-
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
And I do just want to read what this says. It does say that Schwartz and Druber Award for Academic Excellence, presented to Pointer Elementary 2014-2015. So, this will go along with the large hawk and eagle that's coming your way. So, yay, we couldn't be more proud.
And Jane, do we know the numbers that increased?
I guarantee Ms. Montanak does.
Math and reading.
Yes.
I should pull out my official numbers, but 23% total, reading, math, and science. And then, about nine-ish percent for both reading and math. So, yeah, it's pretty awesome.
That's wonderful.
Yes, yes. When we found out, I could not contain myself. So, of course, I had to pull the whole staff together. They had no idea what I was doing. So, we pulled all of the kids, all of the teachers, all the staff into the gym, and showed them last year's score compared to this year's score. But yeah, it was amazing to hear how excited they were that they had reached the moon. A little different excitement than at the beginning of the year, when they really thought we were going to the moon. But yes, that we had met our goal, and that they had all played a part in that. For the IO assessments, to get ready for that, our younger kids actually made a video for the older kids. We believe in you, it's your time to shine, that kind of thing. And our kindergartners actually made rocks for all of the kids that were going to take the assessment, that said, "You rock on it." So, it was a total building effort, you know, to help the kids be successful.
And are you having a big party with all the kids? And I mean, this should be a huge celebration.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. We invited everyone here tonight. We'll have to celebrate when we get home. But yes, I can't tell you everything, because some of it's a little secret for tomorrow. But yes, we do have a little celebration planned.
Super. Thank you. Thank you. Mike, I didn't mean to-
That's fine. Well, I'm a proud Pointer parent, a few years ago, so. My daughter's now a senior, and she went through third, fourth, and fifth, first three years of Pointer. So, I'm a proud Evansdale resident as well. Good job.
Just wanted to say congratulations. Round the horn? All right, so let's get this picture taken. Let's get some smiles up here. Come on, let's get this back.
Okay, now, short people in front. Congratulations.
All of your hardest work.
Yes.
We want to see you here next year, same time.
Yeah, except, and what do I have to do to get one of those shirts? I better go see Trista. I'll take yours. Do they want to take it? Yes, thanks. Great. Are you sure you guys don't want to stay? Come on! Thanks again. Get home safe. Great. It's always nice to start our meetings with such positive things. So, I'll give them just a minute to congratulate and-
Celebrate.
Celebrate, exactly, that's what I meant to say.
Is BLAST being used in some of the other elementarys? Okay, it's pretty common across the district. Okay. Did they, did they start it?
Well, now, it's a lot quieter in here. So, I guess we should move on with our agenda. And the next item is Item B on page three. And for those of you watching at home, this is, we are electing an AEA 267 Director for District Nine. And so, just a little background on what we're going to do first. We all received information from both those candidates that we reviewed and took a look at. And our secretary here has a ballot that we will each mark. And then, once that happens, we will recommend, based on our votes here as a board, we will recommend someone. But before that, I'm happy to entertain any questions. I know Dr. Lindeman would be happy to answer anything that any of us have prior to that. This seat will be representing East Buchanan, Independence, Jessup, and a portion of Waterloo. It is a four-year board term that begins in October of 2015, and will be up in September of 2019, and is being vacated by our past board member, Bernice Richards, was actually the person on this board. So, we have two candidates. We have Mary Jean Blaisdell and Dennis Cron Jr., who are up for this seat. And with that, I would open it up to any discussion from the board before we vote.
Just as a note of, for the, anyone watching, we did receive a letter-
Yes.
-from each of the candidates. And also, some additional information based on some questions.
Yep.
So that we do have information that we are-
Yes.
-have gone over to make this decision.
We did ask each of them the same questions, and then received their responses, so.
And I'd like to thank both of them for stepping up to this, because it's nice to have a contested, that there's a couple people that are interested in serving for representing us, and also, you know, with the correlation to the AEA. So, I want to thank Mr. Cron and Blaisdell? Blaisdell is her name? And just for their interest in, if this doesn't obviously work out for one of you, we have lots of other areas that we could use you at the district, so. Thank you.
Anything further? Then I would ask each of you to just mark your ballot and pass it back to me, please. And then, I will reveal the winner, and then we will get the motion on the table. Super high-tech paper ballots.
No hanging chads.
No hanging chads. No, one, two, three. I'm going to give them to the Board Secretary, actually, that's. All right, we have a winner, Dennis Cron. That is a four to three. And so, congratulations to him. And as Souflin said, I want to thank Mary Jean Blaisdell for also putting her hat in the ring this evening. So, with that, I'd like to put the motion on the table that the Board of Education casts its vote for Dennis Cron Jr. as the Director, District Nine, Representative to the Area Education Agency 267 Board of Directors. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. And we'll send that information to the AEA and notify Dennis and Mary Jean both, so. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, then, this evening, is information from individuals and delegations. And I'm just curious if there's anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board. I'm not going to read my little prepared statement if there is no one, so. While seeing none, then we will move on to our consent agenda this evening. And it consists of six items. The minutes from the September 14th, 2015 Regular Board Meeting, Personnel Appointments and Adjustments, Bills Due and Payable, and Bills Paid Between Board Meetings, Communities in School of Mid-America Memorandum of Understanding, Administrator and Administrative Support Salaries for 2015-2016, and Substitute Teacher Compensation Increase. Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item H, please.
Item H, excellent.
Item D, Delta, and F, Foxtrot, please.
Item D, and Item F. So, that leaves Items C, E, and G on our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
And a second? Then, all those in favor of approving Items C, E, and G, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Item D on page 14, which are Personnel Appointments and Adjustments.
I move the part of education, approve the personnel items as listed.
Second.
Discussion?
Last, at the last meeting, we were waiting, I think, till the end of that week to determine the final class structure and teacher movements and so forth. How, how did that go, or were there changes, or?
Yeah, it's completed, at this point in time. We moved a teacher from Kingsley to Lincoln in kindergarten, and that reduced class size in kindergarten. You know, and those are all these difficult movements. But when you have 800 new enrollees since first day of school, I think it certainly, we have to wait for the context kind of to wash out, and to ensure that we're making the right decisions for our students based on class size. There is another, a couple other hotspots that we're still monitoring. We're providing some support over at Irving with some of our, with a retired teacher we brought in for two to three days a week, to do some reading groups, and also, support with Para Educators at that Irving, fourth grade.
So, the 66 fewer students at Kingsley, are they spread out among all the grades, or?
Yeah, fairly spread out. You know, I wish the guy could say that they all balance out so nicely and evenly that we wouldn't have any issues. But just recalling the numbers, we had about, I think it was in kindergarten, 16.5 was the average. And that was the lowest group of students that we had at Kingsley. And then, it was around 22, and then 24, I think, was the other ranges. And I think Kingsley's pretty static regarding movement. The other buildings certainly had a lot more students coming into it, based on kindergarten, I mean, based on grade levels. And what we've done, for example, at Irving with our fourth grade, we've closed down fourth grade, so if we had another enrollment, we wouldn't be adding to that grade level, and they would be going to another school.
Have we pulled out of one of the portables, or?
I believe we do have some, there's discussion around that, yes.
At Kingsley?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they are still using, they are still using them for this year, because the teachers that were in there are in there. But I think that we're setting ourselves up for the timeline that has been provided for us by planning and zoning, and by the city, to have those. So, definitely, it was a right, a step in the right direction, even though switching boundaries is never easy, nor is switching teachers, you know, especially after school has started.
Is the Kingsley change due to primary, the boundary change, or other movements?
I think it's actually other movements to other buildings. You know, we're seeing a lot of movement, for example, into the Irving. Kittrell actually has some large numbers in the grade level. And I think I would have to look at the updated, I know that Ms. Turner just provided me the updated version, but I think we're still having a few kids enroll even in the last week, and register.
That's true. And we do know the boundary, some parents, actually, and I Cora can straighten this out if I mess it up. But I believe that because of the boundaries, we had, any incoming children went to the new school. So, if you had a child already in school, and you had a four-year-old coming in, the four-year-old goes to the new boundary, whereas the third grader gets to remain in the building. But for parents, they had some time to make a decision as to whether they were going to have one child at one building and one at the other, or whether they were going to go ahead and move them to the new building. And so, some parents, you know, maybe changed their mind at the last minute, or were needing some more time. And so, it really was a little bit of a trick this year to get that right.
And enrollment numbers.
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. However, I do agree with Dr. McNulty. Daily, we still have students walking in. We've had a lot of movement around the district, but we've also had a lot of new families coming into the district, which to me is very exciting. The boundary has been a process, a very good process. Families have been working with us throughout the summer, either wanting to remain where they are. And we continue to be keeping communication open to move the new kindergartners to their new boundary. So, it's been a good process overall.
And Cora, I just want to say thanks to your staff. I know you've reached out to those families and spent a lot of time individually with them, not just, and that takes a lot of time, and a lot of explanation, and a lot of patience on everybody's part. So, I appreciate that, I know we all do.
Thank you.
So, you're projecting the-
I can't see around the eagle.
Hide behind there.
Are you projecting the next several years, then, that we may have a continuing decline in Kingsley, so that it does align with getting rid of the portables?
I'm actually projecting and hoping that the population stables, where that we can continue to see our class sizes at a good level at Kingsley. I'm hoping also that we don't see a lot of growth in the area in reference to apartment sizes and things of that nature. But overall, I do think it's going to remain as a stable population for us to serve and educate at Kingsley.
And it will, it will decrease some, though, just because we moved houses out, and some went to, many went to Irving, and many are now into the Kingsley area. So, we do believe that the incoming kindergarten sizes will not be for a four-section building, which Kingsley was never intended for that. So, we, you know, that's, I believe that we'll get that stabilized to the point where we'll be on track for the modulators to be removed on the timeline that they are scheduled to be. In other words, the boundaries, you know, the boundary changes that you made, did what they were supposed to do, so. Although, it's never easy on any direction, or for anybody. Change is hard.
I just have one thing to add, that has nothing to do with what we were just talking about, but that I'm super excited to see that we've hired a French interpreter for those new newcomers to our community. Because as soon as Waterloo Schools does that, then that means the Veridian sometimes follows suit. So, I'm super excited about that, as the inclusion person there, so. So I'm super excited about that as the inclusion person there. And plus, we'll be able to better serve those students and their families. So excited to see that on the list.
And, no, I believe that that person speaks multiple languages. Am I correct on that? I think seven languages. So what a gift to our district. So it's a great hire. Versatility, so. Yeah.
Wow.
Amazing.
Great.
Amazing.
Is there anything further then on personnel appointments and adjustments? Then all those in favor of approving the personnel items as listed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to item F then on page 27, which is the Communities in School of Mid-America Memorandum of Understanding.
I move the Board of Education approve the Communities in School of Mid-America Memorandum of Understanding for the 2015-16 school year at a cost of approximately $50,000 for each school to work with our students. And are we gonna have an amend? How are we gonna do that?
I think we're gonna amend that, the motion. Amend the motion.
We were?
Mm-hmm. Oh, sorry.
Let me, let me just...
I'm sorry.
Amend it. I think I can do that right now.
Yes. Pardon me.
Approximately $50,000. Just after students, comma, paid for by Mid-America.
Right. That's not our district paying.
By school Mid-America.
Right. Gotcha.
Thank you.
So moved.
Yes, we need a second.
I moved it.
Do we need to amend it? We can vote on the amended motion then? Great. Are there, is there any discussion then on the amended motion?
Good evening once again. I have our two principals here with us. We see this as a very exciting opportunity to have an agency wanting to come in and work with both of our middle school buildings on a transition program, working with students that are at risk, identifying their needs, and assisting them in to the higher level of going on to high school. About a year ago, this program also approached us and we had a fine individual working with us. She ended up leaving with her husband, and at that time, we slowed the process down until we could actually start our new year, gear up, and get the right person in to work with our buildings. By waiting, we also had an opportunity to secure funds to bring on two buildings, which totally we hope in the long run will have a person from this agency at each of our middle school buildings working on transition to high school. I'm gonna let them share a few of their thoughts with you about the program.
Yeah, my name's Mike Landers, Principal at George Washington Carver Academy. I believe this program, after working with the organization, they're out of Kansas and working with them, they're doing work here already in the state of Iowa. And, you know, the program itself, it will allow for them to come in, work with our students, get to know our families, get to know our community, and therefore help with any type of transition that we have from students going from either the elementary coming into the middle school or going from middle school up into the high school. This program seems like a really good fit for Carver and for Central at this time, so we're really excited for the opportunity to have them in our building.
Hi, I'm Melissa Richards, and I'm the Principal at Central Middle School. And I'm also excited about this opportunity. I think the thing that excites me the most is that there's some tiered processes within it. Tier one is it's going to be a support for my entire building with parent outreach, community outreach, everything healthcare, dental, there's a lot of things that they can bring to the building and help me facilitate that for my students. And then tier two and tier three is gonna be taking that top tier of students, which is gonna be about 50 to 65 of our highest-risk students, and really providing a wraparound service for those kids. Each kid will have an individualized case specifically monitored for them. The individual will report back to the building principal on those individual students monitoring how they're doing, and so we can really focus in on those kids academically, behaviorally, attendance, grades, the entire package, and really get them supported up where they need to be. Gratefully, both Mike and I, I have about 80% that head to West, 20% head to East, and he's about the flip of me. And so we've already talked about together partnering those folks to help those kids transition up to East and West. It's gonna be a really solid partnership in our district.
So concerning the roles and responsibilities of this person and how it integrates into your administrative team, I mean, anytime you've got two different organizations, you know, they're not district employees, they're employees of another organization. So isn't there some misalignment of goals and objectives sometimes? How does all that handle?
No, this program will allow for us to, they work with us, they'll meet with us at the building level. I will bring them, I will bring them, I'm sure Ms. Richards would also do the same. You know, they're gonna get on, in line with us and work with us to help whatever needs with the building they have. Working with the former person in the communities and schools, I did have that opportunity to work with her a month before she left with her husband, and she was great about coming in, sitting in on some of our admin meetings, meeting with me weekly to discuss some of the situations going on at Carver. She did a phenomenal job, and they really do just work with us as the administrative team.
And can we just clarify, it is a voluntary program. This is not, this is something that our kids have the option of participating in our families, correct?
That is correct. It's voluntary. We'll actually work in selecting the students ourselves within our district, working with whoever is hired to kind of interchange communication with the families and then work overall collaboration to ensure the student be successful overall.
Can you talk a little bit about what that selection process is? Because sometimes, just for parents to know too, because at-risk kids may look different from household to household.
You know, we have a process in our building already where parents get to identify students that go seek success street, so that would be one of the key factors. Parents get the option to say, "I want to be involved." Also through our counseling services within our building, that's another key of wanting to be involved. We work with other community agencies that collaborate with us daily. They too will have an option to say, "Hey, I think this student, because they're already in mentoring with me, would want to be involved in this program," so that you can assist them in making sure that their grades are on cue, their attendance on cue, and then we can continue to get this student to be successful in school. So it would be a whole team collaboration. It won't be just say, "I, Alyssa, want this child to be..." It's not like that. We want the parent at the table with us deciding what's best for their child to meet their needs to be successful.
I don't have my microphone on. How will parents be notified about this program or have they been already?
They have not. We wanted to bring it to the board for approval. Once that program's in place, then we'll probably put information out in the school newsletter, we'll make information during conferences. Once the students' grades come out, we want to work with that eighth-grade group right now for the first start of the program, because we're looking at transitioning to high school. So we want to look at the path some of the students are taking to ensure they're gonna be successful when they get to that ninth-grade year. That's the first group. As they indicated, then we're gonna reach back and try and get the fifth grade coming into the middle school setting, also to make them see what it is to be a middle school student versus an elementary student. So just that parent communication, especially with conferences coming up, we see that as a great time to put information out to parents. And also on their district websites, I think information will be there, so parents will contact us.
So how many students do you anticipate? It says here that the goal is 10%, which would be about 50 students in each of your schools, but if you're gonna focus on the eighth grade, are you targeting, do you have more intensive targeting of fewer students or?
Our ultimate goal, I would say, for one case, we're gonna to work with 50 students. Starting out, I would say anywhere between 25 and 30 students when they first launch their program, until we gear up, and then hopefully toward the end of the year, we'll be able to have a good core of 50 students that we say we've worked through the transition to the high school level at each building.
Who provides the funding for Mid-America, Communities in Mid-America? When I first saw it, it's confusing because of Mid-American Energy, and I'm thinking, what is that? But, so the Communities in Mid-American is based in Kansas City, you said?
And it's Mid-America, not Mid-American.
Yeah, Mid-American, sorry.
So it is. They are slightly...
I know that they actually seek their funding through various foundations. We didn't have to do any of the funding sources of anything. They approached us with the funding and say, "We have this opportunity for you," which is great, I think.
I believe the company is coming out of New York, Bill Milliken, Milliken Foundation is a really good foundation for non-profit organizations.
And this program is already in the Sioux City area and also in the Council Bluffs area. So we have some models to go and look at and see and bring within our own community. So it's an exciting opportunity that, you know, I love to bring in new things to work with our students. Success is what it's about for us.
One of the goals is a marketable skill to use upon graduation. How, at the middle school level, how does that play out?
Unfortunately, it's a marketable goal at graduation. We want to assist them in transitioning to high school. So just making sure that they understand the importance of doing their homework, the importance of being at school daily, the importance of being involved in their school, which will allow them to stay in school if they're involved. Just opening up those channels for parents also to know how to communicate at the high school level.
So there is not a component that starts to look at different careers and...
You know, that's exciting. That's something that once we get onboarding to, we can do something like that. That's, the doors is open to based on what our community has to offer and what we want our students to grab hold of. That's something exciting I think we can do through our career.
Pathways.
I also think that as we strengthen our eighth-grade exploratory offerings and we start merging, getting better with our Project Lead the Way, our CTE, that person, when they become more involved in our educational offerings, can help guide the students into that, which will play into that.
If you could, I would encourage that, because I think we've been a little bit remiss in assuming students aren't really looking at careers until high school, and they probably could be interested a lot sooner if we encouraged it.
But, and I do think that marketable skills is even becoming a good student. I mean, you know, what that equates to being a good citizen, becomes a good employee, that that's all part of the marketing of the student, I think.
Might I add, as a career counselor who's worked with middle school students and career counseling, I know, I worked for years with Cedar Falls, and we used to do a career day at Hawkeye Community College. And so I just wonder about the connection with Hawkeye, because they have, there's a connection with the Waterloo Schools and the various CTE programs at Hawkeye. And I think, and I would be willing to volunteer at some point, to help format an eighth-grade career day at Hawkeye. I know typically, community colleges focus on high school students, but I think it is critical to work with middle school students. And so...
It's been a while ago, but I remember being in eighth grade and having that opportunity. So thank you for offering.
Yeah, I already have everything all kind of formatted, so in whatever way I can be of assistance to do that. I guess I could talk to Dr. Allen, but I would hope that Waterloo would consider that for eighth graders.
Has there been any preliminary studies on what facility changes needed at Central?
For this building?
Yes.
That would be an issue at all. But...
Carver's the same one.
Well, thank you. Unless there's anything, anybody have anything further for them?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, this is exciting. That's, I appreciate it. And $50,000 is nothing to sneeze at in both buildings. That's great.
And of course, at the end of the year, if we could have a synopsis of how much everybody was helped and, you know, and even maybe some students come and tell us how great it helped them. Thank you.
Maybe we could meet the coordinator person too, that'd be great. So, wonderful. Anything further? Then I'm gonna read the motion one more time, since we amended it. And the motion is that the Board of Education approve the Communities in School Mid-America Memorandum of Understanding for the 2015-2016 school year at a cost of approximately $50,000 for each school to work with our students, comma, paid for by Mid-America.
So moved.
Thank you. Just, we're gonna make sure we get that on there. For sure, for sure. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thanks for coming tonight. We appreciate it. The next item on our agenda then is item H on page 37. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the proposed pay increase for substitute teachers.
So moved.
And a second? And just as a point of reference, in our packets, we do have a comparability study that is referred to, so we do have that available if anyone needs to see it. So Sue, I think you had some questions?
Well, I didn't actually have questions. I just wanted to specifically make this known that we are being more competitive, actually, at the higher end of any of the area schools with our subpay. And I think that that's a good thing to note, because to get good subs and long-term subs, we need to compensate them for the job they're doing. And so I was very happy when this was brought forward to finance, that we're just, even though it doesn't seem like a lot, it is an increase, and I guess it's kind of a token of appreciation for the good job that our subs do day in and day out.
I guess I'm not clear on what the proposal is. Short-term to 120?
No, yes, the daily to 120, and the long-term to 140. Each would increase by 10.
Each, yeah.
Yep. And that was, we had a table that we were given in finance, but I don't think it maybe transferred quite. And the motion just says for substitute teachers, I think it just says the pay increases, but they're both $10 for both rates.
For daily and for long-term.
For daily and for long-term.
Mm-hmm.
How often is the long-term option used?
Yeah, you know, I don't know the exact number of times, but certainly maternity leave, and we do have a lot of new teachers and so younger teachers, so sometimes that is used here more, you know, illnesses or, you know, that would be the main reasons for a long-term usage. And I don't know the exact numbers, you know, the numbers of long terms we had last year and the number of days, but I could certainly get that for you.
We seem pretty competitive with the daily rate, but it seems like we're still behind considerably compared to some of the schools on the long term. That's why I asked, if that's something that's used quite often or...
Yeah, I mean, it certainly is used, but, you know, I think the 140 for the long term would definitely make us competitive. I mean, it would be higher than Hudson, Cedar Falls. And I realize there's, you know, there are a couple districts that pay a little bit longer for the long term, but I don't know that they may use it as much, because they don't have as many teachers as either, so.
Okay.
And we're more than competitive on the daily rate, you know? So I think that would compensate out. And, you know, I just think we just need to maybe make it a procedure to check this every few years to just make sure we're competitive in how we are with our sub-levels and the quality of our subs. I think would be good to just have an oversight of that every couple years.
But the other objective we have is, I think it's on the performance pay, is to keep the teachers in the classroom as...
Less use of subs.
Have fewer, have fewer subs. So just don't, this isn't diminished by this at all, but just a note that hopefully we'll have fewer subs overall.
Right.
Not, not because we want teachers to come to work sick, but because of the different training and so forth that can be done outside of the normal teacher day.
Right. And that did, you know, the number of subs that we use definitely did go down when a couple years ago, we changed to do it from doing training during the school year to doing training during a summer institute. So almost anything that can be offered during the summer is now offered during the summer, and that definitely helped relieve some of the, and we have, you know, a few trainings that happen during the year, mostly because they may be offered at the state level or that's when we have to do it. But if we can do it at any other time, we do.
I just want to restate again, because it's not crystal clear in our exhibit, that what we are voting on this evening is to increase substitute teacher pay daily from 110 to 120, and long-term from 130 to 140.
Thank you.
So I apologize that that's not exactly set out, but that is what we're voting on with the pay increases for substitute teachers.
Effective immediately?
Yes, effective immediately.
Yep. Starting tomorrow, I think.
Tomorrow. Anything further on that? Then all those in favor of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That concludes our consent agenda this evening and our action items. So we can move on then to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. A few items tonight. First of all, I just want to, I think every single time we have a board meeting, I've been using it as a little bit of a platform to remind people that we are working very hard on the high school reform proposal. And we've had a group, a steering committee that has been meeting for, well, almost six months now, five and a half months. And so we are getting really close to writing our proposal. We're working on it right now, and we still have a few meetings to come. But I think very soon, the school board will be, have the opportunity to receive those proposals, that proposal from the steering committee. proposals, that, that proposal from the steering committee, and it will lay out, you know, some, some suggestions for how we can proceed. And so, we've had certainly, I, I think upwards of, you know, over the last few years, I think we've had thirty, forty, fifty town hall meetings, and so we've had a lot, and there's certainly a lot on the website, but I think on October, you're, you're gonna have some, some people here from the steering committee to share more about the high school reform. So, that's, just keep that on your radar, and if you're in the public watching this, and, and check out the website, there's just a lot there. So, we'll make sure we work with the Courier and the KWWL to make sure that we get plenty of coverage on that, so everyone is up to speed on our work. We continue with registration and enrollment. I, I thought, to be honest with the, the later start this year, with the August thirty-first start, that we would maybe have, you know, more students come right off the bat, but quite honestly, that, that was not true. So, we are really working on what we can do for next year. We did pull a, a committee together, and I'm not sure whether we're ready to announce the first day for next year, or are we ready, or, okay, yeah, we're ready. So, I do know that we have, we do not have the full calendar ready, but I do know that Cunningham next year will be starting on August twenty-third, and our whole school will start on August twenty-fifth. So, we do know the first day, which I'm gonna tell you right now, this is the earliest we have ever been able to announce the first day of school for next year. So, we are gonna do some campaign efforts, we're gonna list, enlist Tara Thomas and her department, and really work on having parents' first-day attendance, because I believe, I, I wouldn't wanna say the number, cause I might get it wrong, but it is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of, of kids who did not come on the first day of school, but came after the fact, maybe, you know, two, three, you know, and maybe now just, just arriving. So, and I know that there are moves that happen, but I don't know that that accounted for all of them. So, we're gonna really beef up that campaign and really try to get parents, you know, get students in the door the very first day, because that's when the learning can start then. So, that'll be a great thing. I, I have worked with a variety of audiences on our district strategic plan, and so when I was hired last year, we announced a strategic plan, and we kinda framed it up in the form of four letters, an acronym PACE, and the PACE stood for People, Achievement, Community, and Environment in which our kids learn. And so, we have been working at the district office and actually at the building level too, to really, our technology department built us an amazing website that can host all of, an internal website, but, but that can host all of our actions and our goals and our updates and our monitoring and, and all of the results of how we're doing. And so, we, just as recent as, as this afternoon, we worked on that for several hours, just making sure that we knew exactly what we're doing in those four areas. And it, it is really a, a great tool for us to keep things straight. I think everyone who looked at it, we, you know, we're still getting used to this online system, but it was, it's really amazing. So, lots, lots happening in that area. And then just two quick announcements, we do have the Mayor's Fun Run tomorrow, I believe it's at ten o'clock, and that is for all fourth-grade students in our district, and the Catholic schools participate as well, and so they will all be coming together in the Waterloo River Loop, and it is quite an event. So, if there's anybody out in the public who is free at ten o'clock, please come down and watch our fourth graders, you're, you're probably welcome to run with them. I will be watching them. I'm not gonna run this year, but I do think my goal is to run next year, cause I'll have a fourth-grade child, my, my own son, and so I kinda promised him that I would do that. So, I'm, I've got a little work to do, but I'm gonna be ready, I've got one year to do it. So, I've got a year to train for that, that mile. So, so anyway, that'll be, yes, it'll be fun. So, anyway, that's tomorrow, and I know that the fourth graders have been, you know, I don't know, doing all kinds of stretches and everything, they are ready to go, so. And then just my final thing is, a couple weeks ago, I wished East High good luck when they had their homecoming, and, and this week, this Friday night is West High's homecoming, so I wanted to make sure I, I wished them well on their homecoming games this weekend, and I know they're having a fun week at, at school as well.
Forgot to turn my mic back on. Well, with that, we'll move on then to information from board members. I'm gonna start over here on my right side with Rhonda this evening and see what she has to say.
Yes, I'm super excited that... I'm super excited that we approved an increase in the substitute teacher pay, so hopefully we'll be able to use that this Friday, because Hawkeye is hosting a Diversity and STEM Conference, and the speaker is gonna be Christopher Emden, and he is an author, and he specializes in improving urban education, STEM education, diversity, and youth empowerment. So, I really hope to strongly ask the building principals, supervisors, to encourage their staff to come on this Friday to the Diversity and STEM Conference at Hawkeye.
That's all, thank you. Thank you. Mike?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I did go to the East High football game. I think it's commendable for, to have the eighth grade students march with the band, I think that should help solicit interest. There's pretty high interest anyway. I think our number of, I don't know how we compare with other districts, but the number of students involved in, in music and band and, and marching band in particular is, is pretty high, I think. So, anyway, kudos to that, and I think West is gonna do the same thing. I think.
They are. I think it's twenty-third, maybe October twenty-third, or maybe the seventeenth. It's not this weekend, cause it's homecoming.
Right, I think it's the fall, anyway.
I think it's the twenty-third, we have a home, it's our last home game, yeah.
And then I noticed your comment in the Thursday review about smarter, balanced assessment. Is that gonna be comparable? Is that gonna negate year-to-year comparison? How is that gonna?
Yeah, it will for the, the one year of the transition, because it is a completely new test that will, will come as early as next year. So, if, you know, and that, that still is, is, I don't think it's solidified a hundred percent yet, but it's, it looks that way. So, it would, it would change the, the trajectory.
So, is it possible to calculate a Swarts and Hoover award for that year?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. I do not know that. I do not know that yet. We may have another assessment. We will definitely find another way, but I'm not sure exactly what it would be. Yeah, it will.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Jesse?
Well, I would say that if anybody was out last night, we had the lunar eclipse, what was most amazing was, to me, was the star party at Hoover Middle School. My children attended, and I went as well. And we've been, my oldest daughter, seventh grader Hoover, had started in the astronomy club ever since she's sixth grade, and somehow has pulled her older brother to be attending, which is great, you know, and, but I will have to say that, you know, over the last year, we went, last night, there was, I would estimate at least a hundred and twenty-five people in attendance. There was elementary, middle school, high school kids, and just members of the community there, and for a while, there was a line to get up into the observatory.
That's wild.
Hats off to the astronomy club there at Hoover, and their, the people from the Grouse that also bring that, they also showed us their new binoculars they got with a grant for the astronomy club, and Ms. Kelsey Niebel, Niebel, the teacher there at Hoover, and her efforts there, and, you know, I just think there's an inviting current that we give the other middle schools that, you know, it is a, you know, facilities on-site at Hoover, but is, you know, open to all the schools and all the kids, and that they should take a opportunity to come out and visit the star parties.
Awesome, thanks. Angie?
That's super exciting, because we actually am teaching a space badge at my church, and we want to come to a star party, so as part of that badge. So, anyway, that was not what I was gonna say tonight. I was gonna mention the Diversity and STEM Conference, but one of the things that I really, really want to mention for anybody who has a high school junior or senior, is that I had the pleasure of attending the Waterloo Women Civics Club banquet, it was a scholarship banquet this Saturday, and I also happened to be the speaker, and they were sharing with me that they did not have any, initially, any, any people apply for this scholarship, and it's a book scholarship, and they gave away two five-hundred-dollar scholarships and four book scholarships. And at, at first, they didn't have anybody apply, they had to extend it to, and then they had to have, physically go into the schools and reach out to some kids to apply for it. So, with that said, please make sure that you're working with your counselors, they have resources to help you find scholarships, work with your Educational Talent Search, the Upper Bound programs, those things that are in your building. My brother went to school his freshman year for free based on scholarships, because not a lot of people from his high school actually applied for any, which is great for us, because then he also got his masters for free. But anyway, I'm just saying. So, their scholarship deadline is April thirtieth, so you wanna make sure that you're checking with your counselor then, and I didn't tell them that I was gonna do that tonight, but I, I think that's super important, that you're looking at those, looking at these different opportunities. Every, every little bit counts, especially for books.
Yeah, and they're expensive. So, thanks, Angela.
And I just wanted to comment on the district's diligence to the neighborhoods surrounding the schools that we've closed. I just drove by Logan last night, and it is pretty much all gone, and the Irving site is right in my neighborhood, and that is ready to have houses built on it. And so, I just, I just wanna commend the district and our leadership for being true to your word on those buildings. I think now we just have orange and, what is the status on Edison? That's it, orange and Edison. So, just that we have been faithful to those neighbors. I know Irving waited a long time, but that school did come down, and Logan also, those neighbors waited a while, but it is looking very, very nice on the road out there, and, and then you can see Carver much better, and I just think it's a real asset to our communities that those older schools have come down and the new schools have replaced them.
And Voldemort Field too is adding to our tax base.
Yep. And Mr. Nguyen wrote a really nice article about that on the front page of the Courier today. So, you, if you don't have a chance to get out and actually drive by Logan, you can take a look at the picture on the front page of the paper, cause it's awesome, so. And that was on my list to talk about too, so. I know, it's all gone, it's all right, and I have nothing further this evening, other than a reminder that our next meeting will be October twelfth at six PM, right back here in the boardroom. Is there any further business to come before the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? Great. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.